Welcome you all back after a break. We have now entered the final leg of our faculty development program. And it's a wonderful to see the same energy and curiosity continuing into the last set of sessions. We're excited to begin session sixteen, a hands-on session which promises to be interactive, practical and deeply engaging, a perfect way to conclude this meaningful journey. We are honored to welcome back our esteemed speaker, Mr. P Balaji, Senior Development Manager at Virtual Tech Chennai. With his vast industry experience and practical expertise, Mr. Balaji brings invaluable insights to the table, especially in hands-on applications and real-time tech solutions. We thank him for joining us once again on this final day and for taking the time to guide us through this immersive session. We now hand over the session to Mr. P Balaji. Dear participants, please be attentive, stay interactive and enjoy this final hands-on learning experience of the FDP. Thank you.
Very good morning. Uh.
Good morning.
Thank you, thank you for the introduction. So. So, uh, today's plan will be like, uh. To see about AI for the industry five point zero in India, the five point zero basically. And to go through some simulations, so I have simulations of robotics which we have done in the V-Rex simulation that is Kuplia. Kuplia SIM software, so I will show some demo of those simulations. So before that, uh. Like AI for industry five point zero, so basically, uh, we can say like India's manufacturing sector stands at a very exciting point in the history and as we can see like it is projected to reach around one trillion dollars in the by twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, but to get there, like we can't just keep doing what we are doing right. So for that, we need a transformation and this transformation will be powered by the industry five points, uh, industry five point O principles, uh, which will be an evolution beyond the industry four point O. And at the center of this revolution will be the artificial intelligence. So AI will help us to build the manufacturing that is sustainable, resilient and human-centric. So let us understand like, uh, what is industry five point O, which is beyond the automation. So industry four point O was largely about the automation actually. So then the robots were replacing the humans on assembly lines, IoT were connecting the machineries and the data were flowing through the across the system. But what will happen in industry five point O is different. It's about the human robot collaborations. So we are not just talking about the replacing the people, instead cobots or collaborative robots we can call them. Actually, that is the robots which will work with the humans, which will help them to doing their jobs better. And this approach brings together the best of the both of the worlds, the human creativity and the decision-making, which will be paired with mission precision and the strength. So in this era, another key strength is the sustainability. So the industry five point O places environmental sustainability at the heart of the manufacturing, which means like aiming for the net zero emissions and adopting the circular economy models where the resources can be reused and recycled and reusing and recycling the resources will lead to the reduce, uh, reduction of the resource consumption across the entire product life cycles. So you can see like many of the manufacturing hubs are moving for the zero wastage policies. Like whatever the dumps, whatever the wastages are there, they are just trying to, uh, recycle them and make use of them in an effective way. And the next one is the resilience, which is a critical. So we can see like as COVID nineteen showed us how vulnerable supply chains can be. Actually, so industry five point O emphasizes building robust. So building robust adaptable systems. So building robust systems, adaptable systems which can respond to certain disruptions, whether they are pandemics, economic shocks or natural disasters. So base is like, uh, we should have a proper system, we should be adaptable to any of the calamities, uh, which may come, uh, which may impact a manufacturing hub. So finally, these three principles are not just theoretical. So we can formalize them in the reports as well, which, which can be a framework for the human-centric and sustainable and resilient industrial future. So now we can see AI is the core enabler of the industry five point zero, five point O. So how do we achieve these goals? That is a basic question. So how do we achieve this goal? So this can be achieved using the artificial intelligence. So we can say like AI is not just a tool in this transformation, it is a core enabler that makes industry five point O possible. And human-centric, so AI augments human capabilities. So it doesn't replace the decision-making but enhances it providing the real-time insights, pattern recognition and decision support which we have seen, like in the supply chain management yesterday, uh, we have seen those concepts. The decision-making, so how the demands can be met and how the things can be done in a very effective way. So this will create a symbiotic relationship between the humans and machines and, uh. That is each will do what they can do the best. Next is the sustainability. So sustainability AI will help us to use less energy and reduce the waste. Because like we have to optimize energy for the potential energy savings. So for example, through predictive analysis, analytics, we can say like AI can help us tell the factories to save up to twenty percent of the energy by forecasting the demand, by optimizing the equipments and by preventing the inefficiencies. And next again, resilience, so AI can improve the visibility across the supply chain, so which can predict the potential disruptions and suggest routes or suppliers which can reduce the logistic cost by up to the fifteen percent and keep production running even in the crisis. So all these things will help us to enable the AI in the industry five point O, five point O principles. And in short, we can say like AI brings a hyper personalized production and the ability to adapt to changing the marketing demands and which will empower the human oper- uh, human operators with the real-time data-driven insights. So this integrations means like the factories aren't just efficient, but also they will become smart, uh, they will be adaptable and aligned with environmental and social responsibilities. So. Basically, as we can see in India, we can see a strategic advantage for the industry five point O AI adoption will be. So basically, uh, why it is being said like India is especially well positioned to adapt to industry five point O? So there are mainly four basic reasons are there, the vast talent pool. So we have like two point five million, esteem, two point five million students are coming graduating every year, so, uh. Who will be an add-on to the feeling a large and growing workforce skilled in the AI machine learning. And now we can see like many of the colleges are offering, uh, artificial intelligence as a core subject. So previously like before five, uh, before ten years back end, AI was not as a core subject, we had only neural networks. So using the neural networks only, we used to study, used to put the paper and all. So at that time, that machine learning and AI were just a small part of the book. But now the AI has emerged in such a way like in all the places we can see, uh, uh, there is an impact of the artificial intelligence, whether it is a mobile phones, whether it is an Amazon, Flipkart, Shikki. So, so everyone is using artificial intelligence and because of that we have a huge demand of AI courses as well. So as I said, many of the colleges, uh, almost ninety, ninety-nine percent of the colleges are, uh, offering the AI courses as their main curriculum. And the next is a strong government support and now we have like Make In India, uh, Make In India options and the national strategy for the AI. Uh, uh, so these will provide a clear frameworks and vision for the AI adoptions. So we have a good support, uh, from the, uh, this MSNBC sectors as well for helping the students to bring out their projects, to bring out their ideas to the live creations. And next is the digital infrastructures. So, uh. We have a massive data sets and other, other national digital platforms which provide a raw material needed for the AI development which we can use. So you can see even, uh, we have a comment website to collect the data sets after. We have the data also, so generally, uh, we take the data sets from the Kaggle, uh, Kaggle or some other websites, but Kaggle or GitHub and all. But we have a common website called data.gov.in. So that is a pure common website in which we can just collect the data sets, we can just, uh, get the data sets what we are looking for. So these are easily available. And next we have a growing manufacturing market. So the manufacturing industry already is contributing around seventeen percent to the India's GDP and which will provide a large and ready market for the AI solutions tailored to the Indian industry's needs. So the key AI solution. Components for the industry five point O. So the first one is the predictive maintenance, that is AI analyzes the sensor data to predict the equipment failure before it happens, so that the peoples, uh, can be ready for any calamities, uh, can be ready for any, uh, problems with the machines. So this will reduce the machine downtime by twenty-five to forty percent and will extend the lifespan of the assets and will move to, move from the reactive to the pro- proactive maintenance. So next is the quality control, that is visual AI. The computer vision systems can inspect the products on a line of ninety percent faster with a ninety-nine percent accuracy, which will improve the product quality and will also reduce the reworking on the same, on a single product. And the next, uh, cobots, that is collaborative robotics. So unlike the traditional bots, uh, that replaces the humans, cobots will work safely with the humans, with the safely alongside them, so this improves the productivity by eight to fifty percent, fifteen percent. Because we can't say like every work can be done by the robots. So the work which would be easier to do, which will be, uh, 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 that which can help the industries to bring out, uh, the better productivity that can be given to the robots and and other hosts can be taken up the humans as well. So this will improve the productivity by eighteen to fifteen percent and will enhance the work with safety and efficiencies as well. And next we have a generative designs, uh, so here the AI algorithms will optimize the product design by using the less material while maintaining the strength and the functionality as well. So which can lead to around twenty to thirty percent reductions in the material usage, which will save the cost and the resources as well. So, uh, next is supply chain optimizations. So, uh, basically the, the AI can forecast the demand with an eighty-four, eighty-five percent of accuracy, which will help the companies to plan better and to reduce the inventory cost by at least ten percent and to make the supply chain more resilient. So these things will help us, uh, to bring out the components for the industry five point zero. And next we have a transformative advantages for the manufacturing hubs. So what the transformative advantages are there? So first is fifteen percent of the enhanced productivity, so that faster production cycles will be there and there will be an improved operational efficiencies. Uh, and we will have a cost reduction of thirty percent which will through process optimization by reducing the waste and fewer breakdowns. And we have twenty-five percent of superior qualities. So for the, uh, there is defect rates will be reduced, will improve the product quality and, and, uh, will improve the competitiveness in the global markets. And we'll have a thirty percent workforce empowerment by automating the repetitive tasks. So a worker can be upskilled into higher value by AI augmented tools. And next we have fifteen percent sustainability impact, less energy usage and by reducing the waste, we can help to meet the national global environmental goals as well. So now we can see like many, uh, industries like Mahindra and Mahindra Tata Steels, Hindustan Unilever and Ashok Leyland. These companies are using AI to, uh, to participate in the industry five point zeros, they are already in this industry five point O. So the Mahindra and Mahindra are using AI to check the vehicle defects earlier by cutting the errors around thirty percent. And Tata Steels, they have deployed the AI-driven predictive maintenance in the furnaces. So which will achieve around fifty percent of the annual energy savings. And next we have Hindustan Unilever, where, uh, where the AI is being used for the demand forecasting, which will reduce the inventory by ten percent. And in Ashok Leyland, they are using the AI on assembly lines for quality inspection, which will speed up the processing by twenty percent. And these success stories prove that AI is delivering real results in the Indian manufacturing. And we have challenges and considerations as well for the AI integration. The first one is the data infrastructure, that is we have to overcome, uh, the data issues and we have to ensure the very quality data availability and we have a, we have to reduce the skill capping since our, and since all the colleges are offering uh, the AI as a skill. So, uh, that is reskilling approximately the existing workforce in AI and digital tools will be essential for the effective adoptions and cybersecurity risk. So this is a major concern when we are going for the artificial intelligence, IoT or any of the software kind of things. So here they, so here we are like, we have to protect the sensitive operational technology data from the cyber threats. And next is initial investments, so higher capital expenditures are there. So for, for, for the advanced AI systems and their integrations, which will require the careful financial planning. And finally, the, uh, the ethical AI, which will ensure the fair, transparent and unbiased for the trust and responsible usage. So this is just the basics about the industry five point zero. Uh, so let's go through some projects, uh. Okay, let's go through some projects like, uh, we can see like many of the places, uh, uh, like AI being, AI is being used to, uh, like especially in the traffic signals and all, they are making use of the cameras to reduce the human error, to reduce the human errors. So these cameras are identifying the number plates and it will, uh, get the datas like the person who are not wearing the helmet, the person who are not following the rules. So these things are, are, have already been done automatically. Uh, so we have a project of the object detection in, in which you can see like we have used, uh, retina and algorithm. So by using retina and algorithm, we are just detecting the objects. So basically in the industries like, uh, this object detection plays a crucial role because many of the industry, they, uh, uh, for man, uh, for maintaining the manufacturing of, for maintaining the quality, they make use of the cameras to check up on the products as well. So if they feel like any, any problems are there with the products or any problems are there with, uh, while doing the streamline. So that is being taken up and that issues are being sorted out. So let's see how that thing is then being done. And after that, we'll go for the Kuplia simulation in which I will just show some, uh, some two, three robot designs in which, uh, the robots, uh, are being controlled using the Python, uh, programming. And some robots will be controlled using direct, we have a programming options in the Kuplia as well. So I'll just on the simulation, just one second. Okay, so this is a uh this is a program. Okay, so. Okay, uh so this is a program in which we are detecting the objects. So first of all, we are importing all the necessary libraries here, so we are importing always. Re zip file, number by TensorFlow, TensorFlow input Keras, Mac dot library. And Tensor for data sets as T F V S. So 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 we are running this in the cola, so yesterday we have uh used Jupiter notebook and now uh since this is a a bit bigger project. And so we are running this in color here. So here you can see we are training the data on the Coco data set. So Coco data set is. So this is actually a universal data set which you can use for any of the uh major projects what you are using. So this can be used for the object segmentation, for recognizing in context to to do the super pixel stuff of segmentation. Uh to train the three hundred thirty, so we have three hundred thirty thousand images that with the more than. Uh there is two lakh images as labeled one. And we have one point five million object instances, we have eighty object categories, we have ninety one uh stuff categories. And five captions are there for body image and two lakh fifty thousand peoples with key points. So this is a very famous algorithm which have like all the uh data sets available for major products. Like like all the major products will be available, that is if you want to uh do the object detection you can use this. If you want to go for any more detections as well, you can use this. And this is a pre-trained data set. And this is a pre-trained data set. So this data set we can use for our projects, since data set is bigger, I am just using it directly here. And after that I am I am implementing the utility functions and we are computing the uh uh. Pair was intersection over the unions, that is we are defining the functions over here. So after that we are generating the anchor boxes. So you can see the output output layer, we have the anchor boxes here. So we are generating those anchor boxes over there. So we are generating anchor boxes over there and. Yeah, after that we are pre-processing the data. So while doing the free pre-processing the data, we have the resizing and padding options for random flip horizontal. That is image will be boxes and accordingly we are putting a condition over here to uh to resize the images and uh to put the padding for the images and after that we are pre-processing the data by swapping swapping the data and by researching like uh padding. So so here in this place we have defined them as the functions here. So we have random flip horizontal function, we have the resize and pad image function and those functions I am using it over here. In the pre-process of the data. So after that I am encoding the labels over here by uh so while encoding the labels, we are matching anchoring anchor boxes. And finally, we are defining the compute box target and we are getting the so all the places we are defining the functions here. So all the functions will act accordingly, finally we will use them. And next we are building the uh. ResNet fifty backbone, so ResNet fifty is basically uh that is a retina net actually. So ResNet fifty is a retina net. So in the retina net, we are using the resident based backbone which will use a feature pyramid network which is constructed. So we will use the ResNet as a backbone, return the feature map at the strikes. So after that we are building the feature pyramid network as a customer layer, as a as a custom layer here. So for that one we are initializing the data, we are using the Keras layer convolution two D here and. We are training the data here, so self backbone and after that we are building the classification and box regression heads. So we are building the heads here by using the output filter and output filters and this one we have seen it. So this said we are using Keras sequential data and we have given the shape as none none two who pays that is three D. Uh data and here we have kernel unit that is uh TF dot initialize start random normal zero point zero. Now zero point zero one, so we are just keeping them in a loop. That is for each thing it will it will check out the padding and it will initialize the kernel over here. And after that we are we are building the retina net using the subclassed model. So so the class has been defined as a retina net using the Keras model. And here we are just defining I need and again define calling by using self image at the training it will be false. And after that we are implementing a custom layer to decode the predictions here. So decode predictions, we are using the coding over here and after that we are implementing the smooth F one loss. Smooth F one loss and focal loss as Keras um customers. Get us custom losses, so we have a class as retina net box losses. Instead that I am using the class as retina net classification. So retina net part uh retina net part classification which will implement the focal uh focal loss here, so. After that we have the class for retina net loss, which will be a wrapper to combine both the losses. So uh basically for the standard F one score, we have a formula for like two into precision into recall function. Divided by precision plus recall. And the precision and recall will depend upon the T P F P and F N actually. So we can't be able to use them directly as a loss in the gradient descent. So so for that purpose only we go for the smooth F one loss. So there will be continuous approximation and instead of hard zero one predictions, we can use the probabilities in zero comma one. And we can replace the indicator functions with the continuous variables. Uh for this uh smooth loss, smooth focal uh smooth F one scores, smooth F one loss. And the idea of focal loss actually, so focal loss is like cross entropy. So basically the cross entropy will treat all the examples equally. So basically for imbalanced data sets, so easy negatives, it will ease the negatives to dominate the laws and which will mod uh the model will quickly learn to predict the majority of the class. And the minority of the classes will get the little focus, so for that purpose only we are using this uh focal loss and uh F one loss and focal loss as a Keras as a Keras things. So next again we are just implementing the Tensor Flow, we are just calling the libraries for the thing here. So this is just for the testing purpose, we have used M N A data set whether we have checked like whether data is properly working or not. And after that we are setting up the training parameter in this, so the model directory will be written on it. And we have a label encoder, so uh the label encoder will convert the data into the categorical variable. And we have a number of classes of eighty and batch sizes two. And after that we are initializing and compiling the model, so we can see we are downloading the data from uh Google A P S Tensor Flow. So from there the details will be called and we are setting up the callbacks and again we are loading the data set using the Tensor Flow. And we we are we are converting them into the train data set and the validation data set and the data set info. So we are splitting the data here, so after that we are creating a T F dot. So we are creating a T F dot that is Tensor Flow dot data pipeline. So which will ensure that the model is fed with the data efficiently. And the A P is able to create the input pipeline, after that we are trading the model here, so model dot fit. So we are just running with one in first for faster than faster learning, basically it should be there at least fifty fifty epoch just for preferable. Fifty to hundred epoch just would be preferable to get the proper and accurate result over here. So I am just fitting the model in this and loading the weights and we are building inference models. And we are generating the detections here by preparing the image. So here we you can see that we have checked this by using a uh inbuilt uh image of the Coco data set. So it is identifying it properly, that it versus has been identified and the person is being identified after that we have identified a person as well. And after that I am I have tried by using a direct image U R L, that is. So this is a direct image U R L from the Google. Yes, so this is a direct image U R L from the Google, actually. So that data I am using and you can see it is a heavy traffic data and it is heavy traffic data also. The the system is able to predict like who is a person which is a truck, which is a traffic light and all the things are being identified properly over here. So this is what uh the traffic signals are working on and in the industry basically they they the they make the predictions. They make uh they make check off the products by using the cameras over there, they are making use of the Raspberry Pi and other some uh some high end processes to to make out these things. I will share this code in sometime in the group, okay, so now we will go for the cookie here. Okay, so this is a Kuplia sim tool, actually this was named as a V rep before. It was called as a V rep, V R E P, so before two years, three years back only, they changed the name to Kuplia sim tool. And this is a very powerful and versatile robot. very powerful and versatile robot simulation platform which is developed by Kuplia Robotics. And this one is used for the simulating and testing the robots, automation systems and the mechatronic setups. In the virtual three D environment before. So you can see we have a three D environment over here and we have an inbuilt robot uh robots here which we can use it directly. And it's very popular for the research, education purpose and also for the industry because of its flexibility and also its ability to simulate the complex robotic scenarios. So the key features of this this software is like physical based physics based simulations. So it uses a physics engine that a bullet OD vortex Newton to simulate the realistic dynamics collisions and the contacts and yeah and they have a wide range of robots. So it comes with a library of industrial robots. You can see we have a robot magician, we have a a Mika Panda, we have a Jacko arm, we have a Kuka LBR. So yeah, so we have YMT robot. And we have like TF manipulator, ABB IRB, so ABB IRB three sixty, ABB IRB four thousand six hundred. So so various the so maximum of these robots are the are the industrial used robots. So we have wide varieties of ranges of reports and also we have the uh sensors over here, vision sensor is there, force sensor is there. And we have a light options are there, camera options are there, joint primitive shapes and we have proximity sensors which we have rate type randomized rate type pyramid type cylinder type this type cone type and also with the robot there will be a basic simulations would be there. So you can see there in in this robot what we are using over here. It is a pickup part. So in this robot you can see. So I just kept the robot over here and there is a basic simulation in that which we can manipulate using the coding in this one. So we have a coding like this. So this is a default main. So which which we learn which cannot be modified but we can write the programs in this one. So I will just show you some demo of the projects in this actually. So next we have the scripting and automation possible. So this is a fully script table using the Lua. And we can define the robot behaviors, we can control the loops, we can control the sensor data processing. And we have the remote API plugins available for the Python, C, C++ Java, Mac, the browser which will make this software more efficient for using for the usage of artificial intelligence in the real-time field. And we have the ROS integration that is robot operating system integration which will seamlessly integrate with the system to make it easy to develop and test ROS-based projects. And we have the real-time scenarios and accelerated simulations which will support the for the hardware in look testings and accelerated simulations for the uh faster development cycles and basically we can create the scenes. So you can see we we have the new scenes available here. So we can create the scenes, we can we can choose the physics over here and set parameters for the realistic simulations. So we can see you have this objects are running on the top. So so this is the new scene parameters, whatever the scenes are available. So this so what are products are available, those are being added over here. So this is the flow, this is the microbot. This is a pickup part and we have default slides, we have X, Y, Z camera. So if I if I add any product over here, so that will be added over here in the in the left hand side and we can make use of this product as a variable and our thing better. So we have a components also available. So you can see equipments are there, converse are there, household things are there, natures. So many products are available in built. Right. So we can in this one we can model an arm and convert uh convert to to show the pick and place designs. We can make use of some some fire fighting bots. So these things can be done using the Kuplia Sim. So I will show I will show you some demo in this. So first go through the bubble drop. So this is a simple bubble drop project in which like this is the robot which will look for the we can see the dynamics here. So we should look for the place by suppose if I'm just removing this cylinder from here. So by suppose if I'm removing this ninth cylinder from here, just simply deleting this cylinder. Ninth and eighth cylinder, both the cylinders I'm removing so that if the path is there so it will check the path and it will go out. So we can control the speed over here. So for this you can see we have a so we have everything like is there, we can write the scripts if you want. So this is a simulation script, what we are doing here. So system will be called and functions we are using the functions and we are making the things work. So you can see it got the path and it is going out. So this is one of the simulation and we have a more scene. The proximity, so we have a proximity sensor over here. You can see in the top this red color is the proximity sensor. So it will follow the proximity sensor. So this is a hex support. So the hex support will follow the proximity sensor. So we are using the AI over here. So in this script we are using the implementation of the AI in this one, the basic implementation will be there using the conditions and all. So I'm just running this one. You can just have a demo. The hex support will identify the next proximity sensor, one by one sensor will fall and it will go out of the loop. So it went out of the loop. So again if it is coming any thing in between it will go or else it will go out of the scenario. So these all are the sensor only. So you can see these all are the proximity sensors only. So we have implemented them using the different different shapes over here. So we have a class, sorry, we have a graph over here that is cone type proximity sensor. So you can see the difference like how the graph is running. So one by one. So we have a cone type proximity sensor after the distap proximity sensor you can see one by one minute is moving. So one one proximity sensor it is identifying and finally it is it has come out of the two pieces. So again it is coming in between. So the pyramid type proximity sensor has been detected and finally randomized data proximity sensor has been detected. And after that it is it went out actually. So one way so we have shown some multiple, we have used multiple proximity sensors over here and we have shown a demo over here about the proximity sensors in this simulation. So this is one scene. So this is a line following bubble drop. So that was just a layout and this is a full structure. I think so we have a path over here, we have a default floor and we have coding in this one for the line following. You can see like it will detect the object and it will follow the line as we have given. So if you go on the line, it will follow the line as such. This is bubble drop. This line for a bubble drop actually. We have a firefighting robot. So for this one we have a scenario in one. So this is the laser output. If there is any fire report or something is there means it will identify that. So one by one room it will pass and it will check about the breakage. So for this simulation we are using the cylinders over here. We have the wheel three. We suppose we have the camera, we have the arena and we have the code over here. In this one we have the code. So this is the code for this robot and we have a code for this artificial intelligence. So we are implementing them using the PID. So we have this artificial intelligence over here. So the mobile robot we are using and we are implementing the AI through here. So AI based fire detection points and finally we are testing the data. So one by one what it will go, it will check out the data and it will sense if any fire is break out and it will just give the information over there. Yes, this is fire sensor. This is object tracking. So we have four types of objects over here. That is red, green. You can see that data are coming over here. So it will identify one by one object. So you can see one by one object it will go and it will check whether what color it is. So red color, green color, blue. So red color, green color, blue and yellow. So all these colors are being shown using it. So on top of this you can see we have the proximity sensors. So we have the connectors on top of them. On top of the robot we have the connectors and we have a sensor in front of the robot. So we have these connections you can see in the left hand side. So you have the connections over here. We have the vision sensor which will check about the color and will get us a bit and will identify the data. So in this one we have in this one also we have used AI to sensor colors. So we are reading the vision sensor to perform the color filtering and this is the main code. To handle the vision sensor and to optimize the data. There is proper optimization of the data. We are making use of AI over here in this code. This data is coming over here for that of an sensor. Okay, so these are the scenes which we have done. Using the Kuplia. Okay, so these are the scenes which we have done using the Kuplia. Okay, and okay, so this is all about the session about this industry five point O and thanks for the session. Okay, so now you will have an assessment now for the certificates. So kindly fill the form now they will share in the group or else in the chat box. So kindly fill them with your name and other details and kindly start the assessment and fill it in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Very interesting and very informative section. Thank you so much for here.
Thank you so much, Mr. B Balaji sir, for the impactful and engaging session. It was a perfect way to conclude the technical sessions of this faculty development program. Dear participants, before we proceed to the valentry function, we request your attention to a few important announcements. The final assessment link will now be shared in the chat. Please take the next ten minutes to complete the assessment sincerely. Kindly note that a minimum of eighty percent attendance and a score of at least sixty percentage in the assessment is mandatory to receive the FDP certificate. We request everyone to make use of this train and complete the assessment without delay. Once we are done, please rejoin us for the valentry function which will begin within ten minutes. Let's all come to Let's all come together one last time to celebrate the successful conclusion of this enriching FDP. Thank you and see you shortly in the valentry section.
Wait, hold on.
A very good afternoon to one and all present here. With great pride and a sense of fulfillment, we welcome you to the valentry function of the Faculty Development Program on Harnessing Intelligent Systems Accelerating Digital Evolution in the Industry 5.0 Framework organized from twenty-third to twenty-eighth June two thousand twenty-five. Over the past six days, we have journeyed through a rich and intensive learning experience led by eminent speakers from both academia and industry. Today, as we conclude this transformative FDP, we take this opportunity to reflect, acknowledge and celebrate. We also privileged to have with us our professor and head of the department, artificial intelligence and data science, Dr. Esma. Dr. Esmaleti Yami Ph D to deliver her address on this occasion.
Thank you, ma'am. Very good morning and sorry, a good afternoon to one and all present here. And a very warm welcome to all the resource person who have handled the six days faculty development program in the evolution of industry five point O. I think this faculty development program would have served the faculty community in a more practical and also in an enthusiastic manner because faculties would have gained more practical exposures how to handle the industry five point O for the students of this generation. Special thanks to each and every of the resource persons who have contributed both online and offline and also to the participants who have listening to this faculty development, especially for the young budding faculty members. Because these technologies is what which is going to boom the next generation world and it is also useful for all the doctorates who are pursuing their research in industry four point O also. Special thanks to the coordinator who have organized, Dr. T. College L V ma'am and also her team who have organized this FTP program during the summer vacation. And also thanks to the student coordinators who have helped her in making this event a grand success. As well, once again, thank you, one and all.
Thank you, ma'am, for your encouraging words and constant support throughout this program. We are truly honored to have had the following distinguished guest speakers who enriched these sessions with your knowledge and expertise. Ms. J. Mamata, System Administrator, Tata Consultancy Services. Mr. Yendy Kanishk, A M S Specialist Product. Dr. Arvita, Professor and Head, Department of C S E, S A Engineering College. Mr. V. Ivaraj, Director, J K V Robotics Research Lab. Dr. C. M. Nalaini, Assistant Professor, Department of I T, Veelamal Engineering College. Mrs. N. Nityarani, Assistant Professor, Department of E and I, Shri Sairam Engineering College. Dr. Z. Vena, Professor, Department of C S B S, S R M Institute of Science and Technology, Ramapuram. Dr. B. Bharati, Associate Professor, Department of C S E, S S N College of Engineering. Dr. W. Gracey Theresa, Professor, Department of A D S, Panimala Engineering College. Ms. Kavya S., Senior Data Associate, A T and T, California. Mr. P. Balaji, Senior Development Manager, Virtual Tech, Chennai. Mr. Arun Ramachandran Sugumaran, Technical Specialist, Bosch. We warmly welcome you all once again and are sincerely grateful for your valuable contributions. Now, may I invite one of our eminent guest speakers, Mrs. N. Nityarani, Assistant Professor, Department of E and I, Shri Sairam Engineering College, to share a few reflections and thoughts about the FDP.
Thank you, ma'am. Good afternoon to all the respected organizer, faculty members, participants. I am truly honored to have been part of this FTP and especially I am grateful to share my small contributions through this session. So it was a wonderful experience to connect with the passionate educators and to get learn from each other. Especially I want to say this because I really appreciate the efforts taken by the organizing team and everyone involved. So, once again, thank you, thank you so much and wishing everyone all the very best.
Thank you, ma'am, for your kind words and insightful feedback. We also honored to have with us Mr. N. D. Kanishk, A M S Specialist Product, one of our esteemed speaker. May now invite Mr. Kanishk to kindly share a few lines about his experience with the FDP.
Thank you, ma'am. Myself Kanishk. Greetings to everyone. I would like to take a moment to express my heartfelt gratitude. First and foremost, I should thank Panimal Engineering College and the College of L V ma'am for giving me the platform to be here today. It's always a privilege to return and contribute to the place that has shaped so much of a journey. I also extend my sincere thanks to my organization product for supporting and encouraging me to share knowledge beyond the workplace. And to the faculty and coordinators, thank you for your warm welcome and active participation. I truly hope my session added value and inspired some new perspectives. Wishing you all continued success in your life. Thank you once again.
Thank you so much, Mr. Yendy Kanishk, for your kind words and insightful feedback. To highlight the key takeaways and accomplishments of the FDP, I now invite our event coordinator, Dr. E. Bhuvanishwari Yami Ph D, to present the coordinator's report.
Thank you, ma'am. A very good afternoon to one and all present here. It's immense pride and heartfelt satisfaction that I present this report for our six-day faculty development program on Harnessing Intelligent System Accelerating Digital Evolution in the Industry 5.0 Framework held from twenty-third to twenty-eighth June twenty twenty-five. This FTP was meticulously designed to equip faculty members with deep insights into the evolving landscape of artificial intelligence and its pivotal role in the industry five point zero ecosystem. Exploring themes like machine learning, collaborative robotics, natural language processing and AI ethics. led session three and four highlighting the role of machine learning in industry five point zero. Mr. V. Ivaraj, Director, JKV Robotics Research Lab, conducted session five elaborating on practical implementations. Day three, collaborative robotics and AI integration. Dr. C. M. Nalaini from Veelamal Engineering College discussed real-time AI integration in cobots. Mrs. N. Nityarani, Assistant Professor at Shri Sairam Engineering College, addressed the safety and efficiency of robot development. The day concluded with another expert session, Mr. V. Ivaraj continuing his contribution. The fourth day shifted focus on natural language processing in industry five point zero. Dr. S. Veena, Professor, SRM ISD Ramapuram handled the session. And Dr. V. Bharati, Associate Professor, SSN Engineering College, delivered on engaging hands-on session on NLP tools like text classification and chatbots. The day five resolved around AAN supply chain optimisation. Dr. W. Grace Teresa from Panimala Engineering College discussed strategic optimisation techniques. Ms. Kavya S., Senior Data Associate from AT&amp;T California, brought a global industry perspective. The day ended with Mr. P. Balaji, Senior Development Manager, Virtual Tech guiding us through AI-driven simulations in supply chains. The last day, today, the grand finale commenced with a deeply thought-provoking session on AI ethics by Mr. Arun Ramachandran Sugumaran, Technical Specialist in Bosch. This was followed by hands-on capstone project led by Mr. P. Balaji, where participants integrated the learnings into building AI solutions tailored for industry five point zero challenges. This FDP attracted active participations from faculty members across a diverse range of institutions. We are proud to report excellent feedback regarding content depth, speaker expertise and session quality. Strong engagement during question and answer and hands-on activities. Over eighty percentage of attendance consistently maintained. A final day assessment was conducted successfully to reinforce and evaluate learning outcomes. The success of this FDP reflects collective spirit of learning, innovation and collaboration. I extend my sincere thanks to all the resource person participants and explanation to our management principal, C O M ma'am and our head of the department, Dr. Esmaalati even secretary, Dr. A. Joshi, even organizer, Dr. T. College L V and the entire team with technical staff members for their seamless support. Let us carry forward the knowledge and connections made here into our teaching, research and industry collaboration. Thanks you all, once again, for making this FDP a memorable and meaningful success, thank you.
Thank you so much ma'am for the detailed and inspiring report. To formally conclude today's proceedings, I now invite our event deputy secretary, Dr. T. College L V Yammee Ph D, to deliver the vote of thanks.
Thank you ma'am. Good afternoon to one and all present here. It is my honour and privilege to deliver a vote of thanks on behalf of the organising team at the valdictory function of our Faculty Development Programme titled Harnessing Intelligent Systems: Accelerating Digital Evolution in the Industry 5.0 Framework. First and foremost, I extend a deepest gratitude to our respected secretary and correspondent, Dr. P. Shenidurai, M A Ph D. Directors, Thirmal Sri Vijay Rajeshwari, Dr. C. Shaktikumar, M A Ph D, Dr. Saranayali Shaktikumar, B M E, M B A Ph D, for their constant encouragement, vision and unwavering support which have been instrumental in making this event a grand success. We are immensely grateful to our principal, Dr. K. Mani, M A Ph D, for his dynamic leadership and continued motivation throughout the planning and execution of this FDP. We also express a sincere thanks to our chief academic officer, Dr. X. Prasannadevi, M A P G D, H R M, P H D, P R F, for academic guidance, keen involvement and constant inspiration which added great value to the conduct of this programme. Our heartfelt gratitude goes to our professor and head of the department, Dr. Esmaalati, M A Ph D, who has been a constant pillar of strength throughout this journey. Her unwavering support, visionary guidance and deep commitment to academic excellence have not only shaped the success of this FDP but have also made a significant impact on academic and professional growth of everyone in the department. We are truly fortunate to have a leader who balances professionalism with form and who empowers her team to grow and thrive. Thank you so much ma'am for being guiding light behind every successful initiative we take. We extend sincere appreciation to all of our distinguished resource persons and every speaker who enriches FDP with their knowledge and insights. A special note of thanks to all of our faculty colleagues for their wholehearted support and seamless coordination throughout the six days. Your efforts behind the scenes, your presence in every session and dedication were truly commendable. To the technical team, student volunteers and support staff, thank you for your managing every detail, ensuring smooth conduct and handling all technical logistics with care. Last but certainly not least, a big thank you all of the participants for enthusiastic involvement and active participation which added great energy and purpose of this FDP. With immense gratitude, I conclude this vote of thanks. Let us take the learning from this FDP forward into a classrooms, labs and research efforts. Thank you once again all for making this FDP a grand success.
Thank you ma'am for expressing our collective gratitude so gracefully. With that, we officially bring this Faculty Development Programme to a close. We extend our heartfelt thanks to all the speakers, participants and organising team members for making this FDP a resounding success. Let us carry forward the knowledge, collaboration and inspiration we have gained here into our teaching, research and future academic endeavours. Thank you all once again, wishing you continued success and a pleasant evening ahead, thank you.
Thank you one and all.